All right, thank you guys for coming. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Apparently, I am the running meeting tonight, so welcome. I'll try to do this. We'll go ahead and get started. I'm gonna talk really loud, so you guys can hear me. I... We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, next on our list is public comment, but we have no one signed up, so we'll move on to recognitions.
Good evening. I have Mr. Dylan Walsh. So Dylan has been a student at Tiger Posse since he was one-year-old, so he has been with us quite a while. How old are you now, Dylan?
Five.
He is in Ms. Lockstraw's preschool classroom, four- and five-year preschool classroom, so he'll go to kindergarten next year. He was chosen for responsible and reliable, and Ms. Lockstraw sent me a message of why. She says that he is always dependable, making good choices, and taking accountability for his actions. I also, when I see Dylan in the hallways or in any of those common places, he is following those group expectations. He is being a good model for his peers. He wants to do and follow the rules and do what is expected of him, and he takes that very seriously. So he is a very good model for our Tiger Posse. Great job, Dylan.
This is Reagan. She is an eighth grader at Ozark Junior High, and this is what Mrs. Ash wrote about her for responsible. Reagan's responsibility shines through in all areas at school. She is always ready to learn, ready to contribute, and ready to help. She also has the unique talent of being able to relate to both her peers and her teachers. She is a true blessing to have in class. So this is Reagan Cruz.
Good evening. I have the pleasure to introduce Ms. Fox, who is a fourth grader at Ozark.
This amazing young lady is kind of my partner. She is so responsible and reliable. She's always going on to do the right thing. She's ready to work every time we're ready to start something new. She just stays on task. She's amazing. And she gives a wonderful, uh, attention on nature, on classmate. Do you need anything help? It's all... She's just a person I love. I just love her. I'm thrilled. This is Amelia.
I have Shelby Archdale as our top Tiger. I think the Mosses, they have a sweetheart of people.
I'm excited that I get to introduce you guys to somebody. She is so deserving of being a teacher for responsible. She models for everyone every day in the classroom. I can always rely on her to model that for the Mosses. She's a person of herself. She puts herself in a role to make it whole. She perseveres when things are difficult. I want to thank all that my classmates have experienced about her is that she's always willing to act. When she comes to the classroom, she is always respectful and active. She misses her family. I know she makes a lot of mistakes.
Ozark East is proud to introduce our Portrait of a Graduate student for responsible and reliable, Jordan Gersten Schleger. Did it. Okay, so her teacher, Ms. Myers, is going to say some words about her.
Jordan could really be celebrated for any of the Portrait of a Graduate words, but we're here to celebrate responsibility tonight. And she is... shows responsibility by the way she makes sure she's engaging in all of the lessons. She raises her hand and asks questions when she needs to. When we're transitioning to the next subject, she's thinking ahead, and she's already got her things out, ready to go. I never have to ask. She's that quiet leader in the classroom that if her teammates have maybe missed the directions, they can just watch her to see what to do. She's a great leader and such a great example of being responsible and reliable.
Good evening. This is Willow Myers, and Willow is a fourth grader at West Elementary, and she is in Mrs. Fox's class. And Mrs. Fox was not able to make it due to a family obligation, but she had the following to say about Willow. Willow Myers is a responsible, trustworthy, and dependable student. She works hard to be her best and always strives to give her best. Willow is responsible. She takes care of not only her things, but things that belong to other people. She listens and follows directions quickly. She is always focused and on task with her work area being neat and organized. Girl after mountain heart.
Good evening. So we have two individuals to introduce tonight from the middle school. First off, I have our amazing student, Ms. Isabel Wilkerson. And up to tell a little bit about her is Ms. Quinn Gerard, our sixth grade ELD teacher.
Hi, thank you guys for having us here tonight. This is my favorite thing to do because it's such a great opportunity to showcase the amazing students like Isabel. Isabel's wearing our Power of the Ten Year. So I wrote something for you today. Isabel is a shining example of responsibility and reliability, consistently demonstrating a strong work ethic and dedication to academic excellence. Her love for reading serves as a testament to her curiosity and first for knowledge. With a positive attitude and unwavering kindness, she supports and inspires her peers, making her an invaluable member of our classroom community. Isabel, we are so proud of you to represent Tiger Tribe as our OMS student in our Portrait of a Graduate.
Our Finley River Portrait of a Graduate is Jules Parker. This morning, Jules didn't feel well, so she wasn't at school. So in a panic, I called and was like, "Jules, you were supposed to come tonight. We have family night." And as an example of her reliability, the response I got is, "Coach Perry, I'll be there. Don't worry. I got you." Which is an example of her sweet attitude and her unwavering reliability to be where she's gonna be when she says she's gonna be there. At Finley, we love our Jules.
This is Brooklyn O'Neal. Brooklyn is a senior at Ozark High School and is an Arts and Communication Academy ambassador. This year, she has stepped up in every aspect as a leader in her academy. She's volunteered her time and helped with social media, with the tailgating tent, and numerous other activities. She's demonstrated responsibility and reliability every step of the way. And we are so happy to have Brooklyn represent her academy.
Test, test, test. So we'll just... Hello, 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 hello. Turn my gain up. Yeah, let's get some more gain. More gain, more gain. Up, 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 up. Okay, so if we can run another extension. Hello, yep, we're good. Test, test.
Were you talking to me?
Test, one, two, test, test. Stand, test. One, two.
Okay, moving on to reports. Superintendent update?
I just want to quickly talk about safety and security. You know, this past week has been a little dicey for our junior high and our high school. I think if you have watched the news at any point in time, you know that there have been hoaxes that have been called into various schools throughout the nation as well as Missouri. You can go online and do a search of all schools that had hoaxes, bomb threats, threats that have not been substantiated from the outside sources. And it's just numerous in Missouri. I know many schools that have shut down. So I just want to sing the praises of our junior high administration, our high school administration, our SROs, and anyone that has been involved in these issues over the past week. I can tell you that their first responsibility and their first thought every time has been the safety of our students. And it's not... And then we want to be as transparent as we can, but I can tell you that when you get a... When someone comes in and says, "We think that someone may be shooting at the school" because they saw it on Snapchat that was probably posted from someone in another state, they reposted it, then someone from Ozark sees that someone from Ozark reposted that, and it just continues to snowball. And so they will track down, and they have worked hours and hours and hours, and they will track down everything that is brought to them. And we want everything brought to them. 100%. Because we go back to, "We're going to keep our students, our faculty, our staff, safe." So I want to thank the students and the parents that called in every tip. We appreciate that because that's what they're supposed to do. But I also just really want to thank our administration, even our teachers and our SROs for... I don't want to thank them for what they've been through this week, but they have done... We understand what they have been through, and I'm very proud of them. And we could not have gotten through this week without them. So I just want to say thank you.
Next, our district reports. Is there any questions or presentation on that? Any questions?
Questions?
I just have a comment. I love those. And I know lots of people in the community comment. They really appreciate getting to read those and see what's happening in the school district. They... Those reports address so many facets of the huge operation going on here and all the different moving parts. And those are really nice. I appreciate those. I know it takes the time to make them and compile them, but they're great.
I agree. Next item on our list is future dates. There's a lot. Do we need to vote on them?
No, you really don't need to vote on anything. We have all of the board... The future board meetings. We did add all of the walkthroughs so that you can see when those are available. We have added homecoming. We added the alumni banquet. The MSBA conference was already on there. We did add also Meet and Greet with the Ozark Community on November 14th, so we welcome everyone to come to that. And then I believe we should have a work session on there somewhere in October. October 30th. So those are the items that we've added.
Where is the Meet and Greet? Will it be here?
It will be here.
Okay, good.
Just a note about that work session. Those are meetings of the school board, and so in the past, they've been open session, video recorded and stuff. And people asked me about our last one in May. Several people asked me. I just want to make sure this one's gonna be Zoom, LinkedIn, recorded, right?
We will do that.
Okay, thank you. Just checking.
Next, I would... As the approving of the consent agenda, I would... I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda? I have a motion. Thank you. Second by James. All in favor? Motion passes. Next on new business, we have approving bus routes with Mr. or Dr. Chesick.
Dean's a huge part of this as well, so... Hey, this is a good presentation because it's bookends. You got good news, and you got good news in the middle. We have some news that we're gonna cover. So first of all, we want to start off with getting the clicker ready. I was told it works, and look at that. Thank you, Dan, for getting that working. We've had some issues. When we bought camera systems many years ago, and our buses came with camera systems, they were old hard drives that did not go well in buses. So as you go down a road, you have heads hitting, and they just, over time, went bad. So last year, thank you... These next two are thank you to Dr. Fitzpatrick and the work that she put in writing a safety grant. We were able to select a brand of cameras, which we used to have four, five, and all of them read differently, all of them operated differently. So we now have one system, which is the Gatekeeper system. And it gives us a better camera system. It's through SD cards, which is better than a hard drive where you have the heads moving. So there's four interior cameras, one on the driver, three dispersed to catch every seat, and one forward-facing. So the forward-facing one, we have a large number of people that, when school starts, forget to not stop at a stop arm. So it's really good to have that forward-facing. We could have got those on the stop arm, and it would have only got the stop arm, but we got forward-facing that catches them either coming or going from the stop arm. But it also helps us, in case of an accident, to determine fault or determine what we could have done better or what the driver in front of us could have done better, what to look for. We've had a lot of success with that. They started going in at the end of last year. That was a great start. We have kids on our buses. And kids on buses, if you ever rode a bus, you have a story about a kid on a bus. So it's good to have cameras, and it helps us support the discipline because sometimes the kids forget what they did on the bus. And when they get to the assistant principal's office, they can't recall exactly what happened. So we send video over to help the principals and assistant principals understand, you know, what really did happen. So that's great. It's a coaching aid for drivers. You know, sometimes when we look at that video, we're like, you know, maybe here you could have done better. You could have done better here. Our SROs can use it for safety and security. Entering a bus is like entering a classroom. You cannot do it. So sometimes people step on a bus, and that's an opportunity for us to send that video to an SRO to go have a conversation with a parent about trespassing and other things. So it's a great coaching tool there as well. Student safety at stops. We talked about the stop arms. And unfortunately, you know, we have accidents sometimes. We just had one. We'll see in just a minute. It's a great tool to see, you know, what we can do better if the person was at fault or how we can coach them. In some cases, it just supports that, hey, that person was doing exactly everything right, and just bad luck happens. So we're excited about the cameras. We just had a presentation or we just talked at our last transportation meeting, and our teachers or our bus drivers like the cameras. And they're even jumping in going, "Hey, can we know exactly what seat those three cameras..." Because it's a bus, right? So you've got four seats. It shoots directly into one, and you get peripheral of a couple. They want us to put dots there or some kind of way to mark it so they know exactly where to put those kids that might need a little extra supervision. So they're getting into it. We love it. It's good. It's reliable. It's easy. Anything to add, Dean?
It's a really great product. We're gonna build our GPS as well, and our campus will have GPS along so we can link them together to exactly where we're at. You know, we get all the information for everything along.
And so the GPS, this is another one. Thank you, Dr. Fitzpatrick, for reaching out and including us in your grant. We've looked at this for many years. Boy, I don't know. Every year we've been here, we've looked at it. We can tie it into our radio system through the Motorola's. That's very expensive, and there's limitations of range to the repeaters, back to the base. Our cell phone provider for the district is Verizon, and they reached out to us and they said, "Hey, we have this wonderful product. Why don't you take a look at it?" We took a look at it. It's a fraction. It's a third of what the other systems are. But it also goes nationwide. So we're gonna talk in a minute about trips. But last week, on Friday, we had a bus in Effingham, Illinois. We had a bus in Leavenworth, Kansas, one in Carthage and St. Louis. And we could see everyone. We could see everything that they were doing and where they were at. And it tracks speed, safe driving, hard stops, quick starts, hard stops. And it does everything that we could ask for there. It helps us track safety. We get a safety report every month. We're looking at it in just a minute. This will be an ask. This is... We were at the Assistant Supes meeting yesterday, and we were probably the last district to purchase this, to come onboard. And really, it was because of the price point. But it was a grant this year. Next year, it won't be. So we'll probably come with a recommendation for this next year. But once we have this, this is a great tool. We want something at least. Cellular, so not limited to range. The location assistance, verify drop-off times. We'll look at it in just a minute. We can coordinate our shuttles as we look back and forth through the OIC. We know where they're at. We don't have to jam up the radio with questions about location. We know who to dispatch as it goes. So safety, it's not a gotcha. And when we first installed it, we put a TV up in Dispatch, and it was right where everybody could walk by. And one of the ladies walks up and goes, "You don't want to put the TV there. Everybody can see it." Good. It's not a gotcha. We don't want you to think that we're tracking you, trying to figure out, you know, what you're doing wrong. We want to track students. We want to enhance safety. And when we talk about Dispatch, at the bottom, you'll see there's a pop-out. This morning, somebody called in and said, "Hey, the bus was late." Or, "The bus was early. Wasn't at the bus stop. I was out there, and it didn't show up." Bus driver says, "I was there on time, and I was there for over a minute." Each one of those dots equals 30 seconds. So that bus driver was there from either a minute and a second to 90 seconds. And it shows exactly what time. So it supports the driver and it helps us. But it also... There are some times where we're like, "That bus driver was early." In both cases, we're gonna send somebody back around. But that helps us go, "Hey, you need to leave later. You need to slow down." It helps us guide those because it is important to be at the bus stop, you know, within a four-minute before, four-minute after range. So it does track off our OBD-2 reader in the bus. So it gives us diagnostics. And I want Dean to talk about the first use we had of that in St. Louis over the summer when Ag was doing their summer retreat.
Yeah, so actually, we had an Ag bus in St. Louis on a trip, and a driver called and said, "Hey, I'm getting an engine warning on here." So we were able to pull it up, and you can pull and get instant data from the bus. So we were able to see what code it was, and it was a code for the DEF tank, the diesel exhaust fluid, the sending unit has a fault in it. And that doesn't sound like a big problem, but once it faults out a couple times, it'll derate the engine 25%. Do it again, it'll derate it 50% all the way to where it won't run more than 5 mile an hour. So we were looking at it. They were in St. Louis. This was in the afternoon. Mechanics were about to end their shift for the day. I asked the drivers, "Hey, where are you at?" "Well, we're five minutes from the hotel." "Great. Get to the hotel. What time are you guys leaving in the morning? What time do you need a bus?" "Not till 11:00." "Perfect." So I didn't have to run mechanics overtime, didn't have to do anything. We devised a plan, got the parks together. We took our shop truck and a bus up the next morning to swap them out. So they had a new bus. And our guys changed the DEF tank and sensor right out in the hotel parking lot, drove the bus back. Saved us $400 or $500 in a tow bill plus whatever a service call would cost us out on the road somewhere, plus who knows what kind of overtime we'd have been looking at on it. And the group was supported the whole time. They felt safe, taken care of. There was no panic. It was... That right there, to me, sold me on the program, so...
That's awesome. And that's repeated itself multiple times throughout the year so far. Dispatching, drivers call in. I've got this... We pull up right on the... We're right on our screen. We can pull up the code that it's throwing. We can tell them, "Pull over. We'll get a bus to you." Or we'll tell you to, you know, if it's a DEF regen, we can tell them, "Get on 65. Put the pedal to the floor and start regenerating the DEF tank." So we can see all that, and we've probably... Not probably. I know we've saved some toes on that, at least from St. Louis back, but also just from NN earlier this week. So the screen at the top, the picture at the top. What we're doing in all departments, all operations this year, is focusing on safety. We're looking every way we can to reinforce it. We actually have this great tool now where we can track driver safety. It gives us a safety report. So we said we're gonna give an opportunity for every driver that has driven safely in the last month. And we know that buses are big, and we know that people try to get around them. And sometimes they'll pull in front of them, and we know that our drivers have to hit their brakes. So that could count as a harsh stop. So we're not saying 100% is a safe driving. We're saying we're gonna, at 95, a score of 95, we're gonna say you are a safe driver for the month. Is that a good number? Dustin, you're the insurance guy.
Yes.
Okay. So look at that number. Look at the wheel on the right. That is all of the people that had a safe driving score for the first... All the buses for the first month. There were two, and when as we got to looking at one, one was actually an error in the software or with the OBD-2 reader. So we swapped that out. So we gave out five pri... Six. We gave out six prizes this month, and we're gonna continue to do that for safe driving records. So it helps reinforce just being responsible. So now to routes. Remember, two years ago... If you weren't here two years ago, we'll give you a quick tour. We just continued door-to-door. We didn't do door-to-door for everybody, but we did do door-to-door We didn't do door to door for everybody, but we did do door to door for some of the longer routes and some of the routes where the kids were further apart. So we extended the walking distance to two to three blocks, which is still well within the half mile that Dusty says. And remember that we only get reimbursed for students who are outside of one mile of their attendance center. So like Nixa to our west, they don't bus every kid. Springfield doesn't bus every kid. So there's many schools that don't. We know at this point, it's a good thing. There may be a point later that we get away from that, but that's not where we're at today. But we did extend the walking distance two to three blocks. We stopped pickups at dead end roads and cul-de-sacs in 90 some percent of the cases. If the dead end is longer than a half mile or the cul-de-sac is less than, or is more than a half mile, we still could run a bus down there if that's where the student's at. We eliminated two routes and we decreased our ride time for most routes. And that is huge. The faster we can get kids off the bus, the faster their night begins. And the longer kids are on the bus, the more discipline incidents we have. So decreased ride time is a huge impact for us. I want to walk you through a day. So this is today. And we have always been down drivers since I've been doing this, since Dean's been doing this. Many other districts have been in the same place we are. At the Assistant Superintendent meeting yesterday, I asked, and Dr. Carson, I haven't talked to him about this yet, but he can verify this, but every year at the first meeting, we say, okay, how many is everybody down? Eight, nine, 10, eight, five, just go around the table. So I asked the question yesterday. Fully staffed, fully staffed. Down one, fully staffed. Down one, fully staffed. We're in a different place and we'll talk about why when we get to the end. But we began the year 12 down, which is about three more than where we usually begin the year. We had two additional retirements since then because of health reasons. One resignation to take another job, in a different field, different area. One workman comp, one long-term medical, vacations, doctor's appointments, puts us down on an average day 14 to 16 people. So you ask, how do you cover that? Well, if you look at today, we run around and stress until about 8 o'clock when the last kid gets on the bus. But we have three mechanics that their job is to fix buses, but they drive a full route each. Two driver trainers. Their full-time job is to train drivers. They run full routes. We had two dispatchers. One of them is, one that has resigned to take a different job. So we're down to one, but we started the year with two of them driving. We have two maintenance and custodians and five teachers. And if you notice, those are lightly a different color. And the reason they're a different color is they choose to do that. And we've done that for a long time. So I don't want to say it's a benefit we provide them, but they look at that as like a coaching stipend. I'm going to drive a bus and not coach. So although Dr. Carson and Gerald would like for those to not do that because that gets them out the door right at the end of school and right in the door right before school. So it takes away the time of before and after school with students. But that's how we've done it for years and that's not the first things that we need to take care of. We have one critical shortage driver. Some four, we have four-day districts that surround us and we're able to pull just one right now.
Two, that's two, the current future drivers, they're having Monday off today.
Which is a good.
Both form driver class.
Maybe the best use of four-day school districts. So Dean drives a bus 85, 90% of the time during the day, which puts me at dispatch. Shanna Sears, my assistant, my admin assistant, is full-time at transportation. She, we have moved her office down there to fill in for the dispatcher until we can fill that position at all. Everybody else. This morning, we had two more directors down there covering. But if you look at the right, that's a Tuesday morning when I started doing the presentation, I said, okay, I'm going to throw this up here. That's what we were looking at Tuesday. The yellow with the question marks behind them are people that might be able to fill those spots. We're trying to work everything in. If it's filled in, then if it's green, it has a name in it, that's a person that's committed. If it's white, we're still trying to fill it. The same day, today, we had nine trips. We sent buses to Joplin, Kansas City, two, actually really three to JFK. We sent one to Willard, actually two to Willard, two to Willard today. We have one go to Westport Junior High. Over on the left, I believe it's Mount Vernon, Neosho and MSU. Those buses are out. Most, some of those, the first one went on to Willard at 8:00 AM, 7:00 AM, the first one. And then the second one was scheduled for 8:00. We moved it back to 8:30 because we were still doing routes. This is a huge dance. So that was Tuesday. By Wednesday, we started filling it. If you look over on the right, you'll see we started filling it in. Still have three white blanks. I don't think we had an extra fill-in at this point. All transportation staff are on buses. That includes Dean and every driver, every dispatcher, every mechanic, every driver trainer, every dog walker, anybody that is classified in transportation is driving. I covered dispatch in the morning. Another director helped me this morning. Actually, that's not fair, two directors helped me this morning. Trips were delayed. Teachers ran shuttle buses this afternoon. We have a great group of people that want to help out. Mr. Carlton drives for us for softball. He had a softball game, I believe he was announcing tonight. Before he announced the softball game, he took a load of junior high kids to JFK Stadium, dropped them off, came back, announced the game, and we sent two other buses to pick them up afterwards. So thank you to everybody filling in. Doubling up on routes. We are currently lost count of how many routes we're doubling up. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Subs are coming in and we're beginning to see an impact of quality service. And this is Wednesday. This is how I went home on Wednesday night, thinking, feeling good, knowing it was going to be a rough day. I came in this morning and Brett Adams is amazing. If you don't know Brett Adams, you need to meet Brett Adams. He manages this stress very well and manages his dance very well, along with Dean. And he was stressed out. So I knew something was different. We had a driver call in, which was the nail in the coffin. We were covering enough routes that how were we going to cover this one? He was working a couple of angles. I was working a couple of angles. I thought I had Robert, I mean, I'm throwing him under the bus, but I thought, I thought he in his other job had his driver's license. He did not, so that was shot down quickly. But that's okay. That's not his job duty. It's not his responsibility. So I started planning to take two SUVs. I got my directors in. We were going to load star seats in them, but we made some calls to parents. I got a couple of buses that run elementary routes to split the Tiger Paw route that we could not cover because we had no more drivers and they were late, but we got them to school. We got them to school on time. I believe we got them to school on time. The last pickup was at 8:30, which is pretty close to the beginning of Tiger Paw. So that dance happened this morning by calling in two directors, ran a Tiger Paw route late with two elementary buses, sent SUV to pick up an employee, to shuttle to north, installed extra star seats, high school driver delayed. So we have a teacher that goes to take students to test at MSU daily, at least it seems like daily. And he showed up to get his vehicle. We had his SUV running, so we had to run a dance of swap, moving it to the high school. Our director drove his car back and it was a big dance, but it's impacting our service. Folks, this is daily. I come in 6:20 on a good day. Dean's there, Brett's there already. Our first bus leaves at 5:50. I dispatch, everybody else drives, Shanna's down there. Everybody works 12-hour days. Our drivers that are not running shuttles get to go home if we don't have a trip for them to run. We've been doing this for four years. We need help. We need help bad. So what have we done? We currently have two licensed new hires started yesterday with videos. And when we put this together, we believe that to be true, but we think one started yesterday and one started today. But they're both in the queue, they're both watching videos. We're hopeful that Monday, those two licensed drivers can get on a bus with our driver trainers and our driver trainers can get them trained up the Ozark way and get them highly qualified so that they can begin running routes, so that we can begin to cover absences. Those two drivers get us nothing better than covering absences. We're still running routes short. We're still running routes combined where we have taken an entire route, said we can't do it right now. So we're going to run this bus and this bus, do their routes, and then they're going to pick up those kids that border them. That doesn't fix that. We have one in the testing process, which is a slow process. It takes a while. We train them up, but then just getting to be tested takes a long time. We have one queue or one interview, potentially one interview in the queue. Our shop foreman, we posted soon, but we actually posted that today. He's retiring in December. We have to get that filled, but when he leaves, that's another, that's another vacancy of a driver, plus our mechanic shop. Dispatcher, we had a dispatcher leave, took a job with the Highway Patrol. We have a few applications, interviews at the end of this month. Shanna, again, my assistant, had, that is her full-time job since 99. And it will be her full-time job until we hire somebody new. Thanks to Dan for reaching out and, or Phil, one of the two, I'm not sure, it was a combination of the two, I believe. KY3 Job Fair, October 9th, we're going to go. We're hopeful to get a driver or two out of that. We're going to put it in the Fall Tribune, which is, goes out to every mailbox in Ozark during mid-November. But we're advertising for a job that we've already been told nobody wants. Very few people want. So, and I can no longer go forward. Currently in place, we started looking at our procedures and that's what we did when we got to, when we started eliminating dead ends and cul-de-sacs and extending the walks. There were a couple of outliers. We had two daycares that we are currently busing to, picking up from. All the daycares in Ozark, and it preceded Dean and myself. We don't know how it ever started, don't know why those two were chosen. But we looked at it and if we were to eliminate busing to those two organizations and the OC, which we worked with, and I want to thank Hayden from the city, very positive, very understanding. We've worked out a solution. They actually hijacked one of our drivers. We got in a bidding war. They won. So he's actually going to pick them up after school. So the OC is not going to lose any. Matter of fact, we had a phone call from Hayden today. They actually added one that we're going to pick up until they begin October. He said, really, he's looking at September 30th now to start. So that's good. We're not going to shuttle to those select daycares. We did make one concession today with one of them, give them a little more time. So we will shuttle to the one and not just rip the Band-Aid off for students in that district. So we had students from two different elementaries shuttling from one daycare. So we had a bus leaving an attendance center, going to here, picking up and going out. Not doing that. Don't know how it started, but we're, by doing that, we consolidated three elementary routes and one secondary route. So 23, 63, 61 Elementary are consolidated and 61 Secondary has been absorbed. We also just started driving shuttles for sped. We moved a sped, two sped classrooms over here and I think they love it. I think it's a good thing. I know it's a good thing, but there are services at the high school that these special needs students need, so we have to now shuttle them back and forth. Not really a good fit to put them on a bus with 66 other kids that we're shuttling up. So this is what we've done this year. Here's our needs. These are the things that we've talked about as administrators, as leaders, throughout the last few years. I can tell you that when I asked everybody yesterday and talked through them, how did you get to where you're at? Number two on the list and the last one on the list, add benefits for part-time drivers and evaluate incentive programs are the two that they feel has got them to where they're at. So right now, salary adjustments, our dispatcher and our driver trainer, who we would argue are leaders, but also full-time drivers at this point. And our mechanics make less than a driver. So our dispatcher, and the way we got there was we felt that because they were full-time, the benefits they received was a good thing. And the offset of having benefits and a slightly lower, but I'm getting 40 hours a week and benefits was good. But when we started opening the OC, we started full-time drivers. So that full-time driver is at a higher rate and getting benefits so the people that are training them and leading them are making less and doing the same job at this point. So we would ask that we would consider that. And when I say consider this, these are things that we're going to talk about next month. This is the primer for next month. Add benefits for part-time drivers and that would really end up by HR, would end up being everybody, but reality is, is this is what every other districts believe helped them. There's a couple of people that need 260-day, our driver trainer, one of the two, we could then train drivers in the summer. The new driver that we have that's sitting in the queue waiting to test, if we had them during June and July, the driver trainer, we could have been a little bit better ahead. We can run classes throughout the summer to get people brought up to speed. Increase substitute bus pay, again, that's one of those things that was good at one time, but ignored over time and it's just not where it needs to be. We'll talk more about that one. This one I want to talk through because I've talked through it with three people and all of them said, I need pen and paper. So I want to talk through this. Right now, our policy says comp time or overtime, but our procedure is that we always do comp time. And in doing that, if I have to cover a route, today we had a bus driver call in sick. So she didn't drive for five hours. So I had to pay somebody to do that. I got somebody to cover her route. And by covering her five-hour route, that's all comp time. They did their job plus this five-hour route. So that five hour becomes seven and a half hours of comp time. So now I have an employee at transportation that has earned seven and a half hours of comp time. That drive, that person is driving on a regular, on a regular day. We highly encourage our people to take their comp time. So that person now takes their seven and a half hours of comp time that they earned. Somebody has to drive that bus. Kids don't say, we don't get to say, hey, the bus driver took the day off. You don't get to go to school today. So now we have somebody covering somebody's seven and a half hours they're taking off. Again, because of the situation of being down as many drivers as we are, that person is making comp time. So that seven and a half becomes 11 and a quarter. And we've only covered two absences. We encourage that person then to take their 11 and a quarter comp time and it becomes 16.8 hours of comp time. So this is a snowball effect because I earned comp time, I could take comp time, there's, we cannot not cover that route and anybody that's going to cover it is going to earn comp time. So one route of five hours, instead of paying out seven and a half hours OT, ends up to be with just two additional absences, four days, almost five days, well, almost four days of busing. So that's one of the things that we really need to look at is, can we just pay overtime at this point? It just compounds the problem. It's, I know Lori said snowball effect earlier, it's a snowball. It just keeps building and building and building. And we get to the, and we're not even talking about trips on weekends. One trip on a weekend is, so if I have One trip on a weekend is, so if I take, if I take a bus to a competition in St. Louis this weekend, and it's two days, that bus driver gets paid to drive down there, and when they're down there, they get 16 hours. Now, it's not at their full-time rate, it's at trip pay, but it's trip pay and comp, because they've already worked their time. So, it's trip pay, which is a lower hourly, but it's being paid out in comp time. So, they may only drive six hours, but they're paid 16 because they are away from home and they're there. Then they drive back on Sunday, and their drive time is counted. So, we're, a one-weekend trip could equal 32 hours of comp time, which just compounds the problem. So, that's, any questions? I know that's, yes ma'am?
I kind of think that doesn't make much sense at all to encourage people, use your comp time, be gone, create another absence for us to fill. I think that's good that you're looking at that.
Yeah.
I have another question about a long time ago, you said something about the grants with the cameras?
Yes.
Are those cameras purchased with that grant, or are they leased? Okay, so next year, we already own the cameras still.
Yeah, there's no, everything on the cameras besides upkeep is taken care of.
That's amazing that she was able to get that grant. Thank you for doing that, Dr. Fitzpatrick.
So, the next was reevaluating busing all students, we mentioned that. Look, that's, that's not a today, that's not next week. That is a huge conversation amongst the board, amongst administrators, amongst the community. That's, that's a huge change. That's not something we're saying, hey, but if I, but if we compare ourselves to our neighbors to the West and say, hey, they're fully staffed, or they're one, I think they said they're one down, they're doing fewer routes because they don't bus within one mile of an attendance center. So, there's some ideas we have there, but we also know that safety is a huge issue. We can't ask anybody at West Elementary to walk to school. There's areas of North Elementary, South Elementary, and East Elementary that we could say, hey, we can't bus back here, it's within the miles, we need you to get there. All conversations for the future, not for tonight or next month. New buses, you know, if we're running one of the oldest fleets in the area, people have an opportunity to go to a different district and drive new equipment, that's a good thing. According to our handbook and conversations, you know, we've always come, our coaches need to drive, our coaches need to drive. Well, we need to really look at making that more of a rule than a suggestion. We are starting to pack buses as we consolidate these, we have teachers that ride to keep our discipline down, and it's a great thing. So, one of the things we want to do is encourage more teachers to do that and expand that. Our trip handbook procedures, we have not looked at that in several years. We're going to reevaluate that and come back to you next month with some other recommendations as well, or maybe just, hey, this is where we want it to land. Evaluate incentive programs. I know where I stand on this, but I also know that in talking to Springfield and Republic yesterday, those two districts feel that that is one of the strongest tools they have in recruiting. And Dean, how many have, well, we won't say that. We've lost a lot to the North, we won't put a number on it. They've increased their pay, they have incentive programs, and they're working hard to keep their drivers, and we need, need to help it out.
And insurance, that's a big deal. We've said that for a while now.
Yes, yeah, huge. So here's the, so bookends, right? I said, bad news, or good news, bad news, good news. Here's the good news. The staff down there is like a family. I think Dr. Link could have, could comment on that from exit interviews that we had, have had. They have been working 12 hours for four-plus years. And you walk in there in the morning, they're at their tables before work, talking with their friends, planning their day, working, working together, asking, caring. When we had our work comp issue the other day, I had to follow the bus in, or the ambulance in, everybody was, wanted to know how well he was doing, what it was, they've called him, they've rallied around him. This is, it is a family. Sometimes families fight a little bit, but they always hug at the end of the day, and if you get in the middle of a family fight, you know that you're on the wrong side of the fight. So, there, it's a family. Several COC schools have offered benefits this year and are fully staffed. There's hope, right? We've got a family, they need some help, there's some hope there. Incentive programs, as I said, are helping. Hourly rate for retired subs, where they fall on the salary scale, currently paying comp for wage, we got to talk through that. We got to talk through how we can do better on our subs. The only reason we can function is the dedication of the entire Ozark transportation staff. There's not a flat tire over there, there's not a weak link. Everybody is ready, everybody's working. Kids are kids. In the middle of everything that's going on in the mornings, there's always somebody that's at the wrong building, either at the OIC or the high school, and we're always running an extra shuttle to pick them up. We always have somebody willing to say, hey, I'm closer, I'll go do that, you continue on your route. They're, they're great. They have one goal, and it's to help kids. So what we're asking is, in October, we're going to come back, we've already started looking at this, and Robert, Dr. Hedgeworth and Philip Link have both talked with us, they met with our directors, they've got a plan that they're looking at, hopefully bringing some numbers next month about how we can adjust these salaries and what that means for those people. We are evaluating benefits for part-time employees, and I won't comment, I'll let Dr. Wilson comment on the strength at which we're doing that, and the pace at which we're doing that. But that's something that the three asterisks or four asterisks is there, that's not a guarantee, that's not a given, it could fall, it might not fit with our benefits cycle, there's a lot there, but at least bring it up, and we're going to talk through a plan. Extend time for a couple drivers, increase substitute-based bus pay, allow OT, those are some things that we are going to come, and we're going to have specific recommendations next month, and we're going to have a lot of discussion around. And as we pack buses, you know, ask more teachers, evaluate the handbook, and we'll evaluate the incentive program. Those three in black, those are, those are big ass, those are long-term. Maybe we don't ever get to the reevaluate busing all students, but man, if we have to, then that's a hard conversation we're going to have to have. I can tell you, in just changing two daycares, I've had hard conversations with parents, I've had hard conversations with businesses. You know, from the past, moving cul-de-sacs and dead-end streets, you know those are hard conversations. That will be nothing compared to what we would face in doing that. So, but know that we don't get a penny for anything within that mile, no reimbursement. So, having said that, I actually recommend, I recommend that you approve the routes that we just presented, that we cover the best way we can every day, regardless of the staffing shortages, and the staff at transportation does it with a smile on their face almost every day. Dean, you have anything, Ed?
No, I think I pretty well covered it. I just want to echo the fact that we've, we've got the best team of drivers and aides. You can ask for anything, and nobody questions it, they, they know the need, everybody's pulling in the right direction. It's, it's a great place to work, great, great bunch of people to be a part of, so.
Hey, great job, thanks for the presentation, and great job, Dean, for keeping, keeping all this running on 12 hours a day. I mean, so I think all of us would agree, we don't think you should be doing that. So, and I know part of this will be, I guess, next month, figuring out the numbers, but a couple questions in no particular order that you might think about, or, okay, can you have a mix of part-time and full-time drivers? You know, I don't know, so you don't have to answer these now, but how many drivers, or how many drivers do you need to fix this, this problem? I don't know how many drivers you have, but you can probably figure this out, you know, tomorrow.
So, to fully fix the problem, and that would be to get teachers out of buses?
So that you guys don't have to be doing the buses, right?
Nine.
Yeah. So we need to know that, that number, what's the cost? What's the cost? And then, you know, the salary cost structures and all that stuff, I mean, come back with the actual numbers that will keep people here for the long term. And then have you, have you asked people, have you asked the former bus drivers, hey, what would keep you here? Oh, a little bit more, whatever. I mean, if they say, hey, I wanted to go to something else regardless, that's one thing, but if they said, hey, if you gave me XYZ more, then we know. So, and then, yeah, definitely, I think the coaches and activity people, sponsors, that would be a great place to, to get extra drivers as well.
And we have, we have exit interviews, we have, we have, we have that information. We, it would be an equally as pleasant presentation next month.
And are these advertised right now?
So, no, they're, they're posted, and then we get the information out as best we can.
So if we people, if we see people out there that say, I'm looking for a job, can we just send them to you?
You, listen, I, I give a sales pitch to everybody I meet, there's three gentlemen that I go to church with every Wednesday night, two of them are retired drivers, and Ava, and I ask them every month, and I think I have them convinced to come, if their wives will let them is another question.
Appreciate it.
Dr. Cheswick, I know Christmas is going to be a big conversation. When we have this conversation next week, or next month, rather, would you, I have one ask, would you bring the tenure, a list of tenure of our drivers? I'm curious to know what that looks like.
Can I brag for a second?
Absolutely.
We, we will do that, we can get that. Last year, we had the two most tenured employees in the district. One of them is retired, the other one is still here. So, yeah, and they've, how many years?
Three years.
Four?
Yeah, third time.
So, yeah, we'd love to get that to you.
Thank you.
So, perfect. So if we have a recommendation to approve the routes that were presented?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Motion passes, thank you.
May I interject just a second? We will come back next week with a plan on all of those. Not saying that all of those will be implemented immediately, but we will have a plan of attack.
Next item is the vacation rollover, and that is, oh, thank you, by our new HR director. Thank you.
So are they losing, if they don't, if that date doesn't shift, are they losing days?
No, it just changes it from, sorry, I apologize, I should turn that on. It just changes it from vacation to leave. They don't lose the days, they just lose the flexibility of that day, being a vacation day to a leave day. There's more restrictions on what you can use a leave day for.
That's a good clarification, yes.
Thank you for asking.
Okay. Is there any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Any motion?
Thank you, thank you.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion passes. Next is...
Can I say one thing real fast? Dr. Cheswick, thanks so much for preparing all of that, telling us your brainstorming and telling us the truth about where you are, so we are aware and people are aware of what the problems are and can start trying to help, too. Thank you for doing that.
Excellent presentation. All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Oh, we need to adjourn into closed session.
I'll, I'll make a motion that the Ozark Department of Education go closed session. I'm going to leave edition of our S and O 610, section 1, section 3.
Can we do this now? Can we do that? We can do it here?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, and this is roll call? Yes.
Never.
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Yes, and again, thank you for only making it the sections that we have something to talk about on the agenda.
Okay, so we're in closed session, we can go over to the other room. Thank you.